Good evening and welcome to our November 2021 Town Hall meeting. I'm Chip, I'm one of your elders, and I'm so grateful that you're here. I'm actually here at our Torrance campus in our lobby, and I'm joined by our lead pastor Jason Cusick, and two of my wonderful fellow elders, Terrence Powell and Sheldon Brackett. We're so grateful that you're here to join us. Thank you so much for taking time out of your evening to just be a part of our church. So before I begin, please join me in a word of prayer. Lord God, thank you so much for everything you're doing with us tonight. Thank you for this time that we get to gather. Thank you for our church. Thank you for all the wonderful servants that are part of this church and the way they pour their lives out to you. Lord, please be with us, Lord, and give us wisdom as we make important decisions tonight. Be with our lead pastor. Give him wisdom, give him guidance, give him endurance, give him strength, Lord. And also just pray for your presence in this gathering, Lord. We thank you so much and ask all this in Jesus' name. So just to run through a little bit about what we're going to do tonight, we'll do a few things. We will first of all, present to you two dedicated servants who have been nominated to join the Deaconate, and we'll be asking for your approval of their appointment as deacons. And then we will be presenting to you Stu Johnson. You'll get a chance to get to know Stu. Stu has been nominated to become an elder, so we'll also be asking for your approval to give him this appointment as elder. And then Jason, our lead pastor, will then present to you some of the vision of what's going to happen for the remainder of 2021, and then he'll answer a few questions. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Terrence Powell.
Thanks, Chip. My name is Terrence Powell, one of the elders and the chair of this year's nominating committee. Like you, I appreciate all of our staff and volunteers that make Journey of Faith a welcoming and warm place of worship. Tonight, I am proud to introduce to you a few of our servant volunteers that are taking an extra step and becoming a part of the Deaconate and Elder Board. In order to make their positions official, we need your vote of acceptance. Because we're meeting virtually, we will consider your vote a yea vote for the candidates unless you choose otherwise. To vote nay, please indicate this by writing nay in the chat. Before I share with you the list of Deaconate nominees, I thought I would go over the role of our Deaconate. The title of deacon is an honorary title that we want to give to someone of some of our most involved care ministry volunteers. Having this official title helps our care ministry members perform their role in multiple ways. For example, when they call someone in need, make a hospital visit, pray for someone, or lead a care group, they can say, "I'm a deacon" from Journey of Faith, and note that their title carries a certain amount of authority that is different than a volunteer title. The title deacon also instills confidence in the person or group they're shepherding. Now, your Deaconate nominees are Jan Charlin and Dan Charlin, and we thought we would show you a great picture of both of them on the Buzz Light. I would like to move to nominate Jan Charlin and Dan Charlin to be approved for deacons of Journey of Faith. May I have a second? That's Krista Reina from the room has given her a second. Again, you can use the chat function if you want to cast a nay vote for a Deaconate nominee. Now we have someone to present to you as a potential elder. Based on qualities exemplified in Scripture from 1 Timothy, Chapter 3, Verses 1 through 7, and Titus, Chapter 1, Verses 5 through 9, an elder is a godly man that shows that he's a godly man that's been a member of Journey of Faith for at least three years, is responsible for maintaining spiritual, moral, legal, and financial accountability for Journey of Faith. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to our elder nominee by way of video. Take a look.
My name is Stu Johnson. I have been attending Journey for almost 21 years. I am married with two children. My wife Julie and I have been together for 29 years. We have a 15-year-old daughter Maddie, who's a sophomore at Miracosta, and our son Hatcher is almost 18 and is a senior at Miracosta as well. They're both active in the student ministry here at Journey and have been coming to Journey since they were infants. I've been serving in various capacities. I started in a small men's group when my daughter was born almost 15 years ago, and helped start facilitating as a leader in men's group every semester since, and served in various ways, including just guiding people through parking lots at various Journey events, and have been a ride-along with the Elder Board for the past year. I grew up in Texas, attending church with my family. Went to a Baptist church, and for us, it wasn't really more than attending service on Sundays, but it did at least give me that foundation and planted that seed in my heart. And then shortly after my wife and I were married, I was invited to attend Journey, and came in one day and I immediately felt a real connection to the church, real connection to what Journey's message was, and it really, really rekindled my desire to start growing in my faith and drawing closer to God again. What I really love about Journey is the outreach into the community, and we're constantly, I think, finding ways to bring in people who may not be churched or who may not have grown up with a faith background, and just really trying to reach out to those who are seeking God, whether they realize it or not. That I think is an incredible mission and one that I'm excited about, and one I think that's really worthwhile.
We're really thankful for Stu considering such an important leadership role at our church. I move that Stu Johnson be approved to be an elder. May I have a second? Okay, Krista Reina is our second, once again. Once again, you can use the chat function if you want to cast the nay vote. And thanks, everyone. Now, I'd like to give you a financial update on Journey of Faith and how it's doing. So I'm going to hand it over to our treasurer, John Burge. We may have missed that earlier in the introduction.
I'm John Burge, one of your elders here at Journey. I will be providing you a brief financial update on the state of our church. The elders and I want to be sure you know how we are using the resources which you provide to achieve our mission, helping those in the South Bay who are far from God to find and follow Jesus. And we accomplish this mission by being an intentionally outward-focused community that is as welcoming as possible for those who have never attended church. And we budget and plan our finances to achieve this mission. Now, to keep things simple and understandable for the non-accounting types, I will present a picture of our financial health by addressing two key questions. First, how has income been impacted over the past 18 to 24 months? Well, in the world of COVID, we can't talk about giving without first talking about attendance, and as Jason will discuss further, our current attendance is still less than 50% of pre-COVID attendance, which is not unexpected given where we live. Yet, income remains healthy, and this bar chart shows our income over the last five years. And since we don't yet have a full year for 2021, we are showing the January through September numbers for each year, which allows an apples-to-apples comparison. Now, although giving has dipped over the past two years, overall income has remained strong. We're running near $5 million for the first three quarters of each year, which is around our average for the last five years. All things considered, this is pretty good, and we did not expect attendance to bounce back to 2019 levels. In the 2021 Pew Foundation survey on how COVID is impacting church attendance, our demographic is among the least ready to resume in-person attendance, starting with being in the Western U.S., then in California, and then in the South Bay. And the South Bay is our mission field. This is who we seek to reach and introduce to Christ, and it is partly why we did not reopen as early as other churches across the country, including some nearby. We can empathize that people missed gathering in person. We did as well. In making our decisions on regathering, we carefully considered the demographic we seek to reach, as well as everyone's safety. We lost two members of our staff to COVID. One of our elders lost his mom. Personally, I lost two relatives. We lost Journey members and untold numbers of their relatives to COVID. We took safety very seriously. And while we were not open, we used that time to expand our online capabilities, not just for COVID, but for reaching those who feel more comfortable attending online services before attending in-person services. Now, this chart addresses giving specifically. It has a month-by-month comparison of 2019 to 2021. And while 2021 numbers are lower, they are tracking quite well, given the circumstances. To those who are faithful recurring givers, we believe you represent the most committed congregation Journey has had through this difficult period. Thank you for helping Journey not only get through this pandemic, but to continue our mission in the face of it. Now, the second question. How have we been managing expenses over the last 18 to 24 months? So here is a bar chart of our expenses over the last five years, which mirror the income chart you saw earlier, and is similarly on a January-to-September basis. Similar to our income, we have been running near $5 million on the expense side. As income dropped a bit through COVID, the staff reduced budgets and cut expenses to match. So from a net income standpoint, in 2017 and 2018, we ran a bit negative. For the last three years, we've actually generated positive net income. As you may recall from the previous business meeting, we set a zero-based budget for this year, and we're tracking quite well to that. You may also recall that we drew $750,000 down on our line of credit to pay off a portion of the Torrance campus, which at only 4% interest has also served as a low-cost insurance policy, given all the uncertainties of COVID. And our cash position is healthy, and as we gain comfort in giving ticking back up, we will gain comfort in paying the line of credit down. Now, from the elder standpoint, the Journey team has been an exceptional steward of your giving in the midst of this unique and challenging season. So what does all this mean? Let's go back to the goal of this presentation, which is assessing how we are doing with the resources we have to achieve our mission. During COVID, we engineered our operations to support more than one location and launched the Torrance campus. Torrance attenders are already covering half of the Torrance operating expenses. Now, two years ago, we had one permanent location, one portable location, and were essentially prototyping online delivery. Today, we have two permanent locations and a very strong online capability. We're financially solid. We believe we have the most committed congregation ever, and we believe this staff has been better stewards of your giving than ever. So when you look at this from a mission perspective, we have significantly increased our capabilities to execute on our mission compared to where we were in 2019. Now, I'm not saying it is time to high-five each other and that it is smooth sailing from here. And the last two years have been rough. Times are still rough, and we have a lot of work to do. Now, we all love the South Bay. This is our home. This is our community. This is where we have been called to reach those far from Christ. We are working hard to encourage more people to begin giving or to increase their giving as God has blessed them to be able to give. We want to continue to expand our ministry, and through your support of Journey of Faith, we can continue to execute this mission that God has entrusted us with. Now, if you have questions about anything presented here tonight, you can contact Kathy Haynes, our finance director, who can help get you an answer. So thank you for your time, your attention, and your generosity.
Hi, everybody. Great to be with you. I want to say a big thanks to John Burge and our great finance team for creating these updates, kind of helping us stay on mission in a responsible way. So I wanted to share with you a few questions that came in, be able to answer those for you. I also want to say thanks so much for the opportunities to meet one-on-one and in smaller groups that we've had together, especially over the last 18 months. Some people are like, "Hey, are we answering questions?" Oh, we're meeting with people all the time, and our whole team has been meeting with a lot of you as we're wrestling through so many things in our world, and it's great that we get an opportunity to sit down and walk through some of that stuff together. So thanks for the questions. Thanks for the opportunity to sort that stuff out. We want to keep finding those ways to connect so we can keep doing the great ministry God has for us to do right here in the South Bay that God's calling us to. So here's a few questions that came in. The first one was, "What can you tell us about what's happening with our missionaries and what's happening around the world through Journey of Faith?" And so I have to say, this has, of course, been a really tough time of transition and reinventing missions, especially because of COVID. Countries are doing things different around the world. Some countries are having their Valley Forge moments of just kind of hunkering down and trying to get through it. And every country is dealing with things in different ways, but God's doing great things around the world. We currently have 36 global partners who provide compassion ministry, church planting, and leadership development. So let me give you a few updates on some of those things that we're blessed to be a part of. With regard to compassion ministry, one of our global partners is called SOS International, and through them, we've been a part of helping feed over 5,000 people in Africa and in Asia. We also partner with Missions Door, which has provided a lot of important care for the people of Haiti after the most recent devastating earthquake there. And our partners with World Venture have been involved in relief efforts to help Afghani refugees. And they've actually created an online international prayer network to support the work of global missionaries. With regard to our work starting new churches and developing leaders, our own pastor Bill Ankerberg led 140 pastors who are planting churches in highly unreached communities, including over 100 villages that have no churches at all. And this is Bill's 14th year of helping start and lead churches there. Mark and Lisa Denai are and they have one of the fastest-growing churches there. It started in a coffee shop, and God's doing great things. They've actually now planted a second church. In the Philippines, Dave and Sam there in the Philippines. And we're also celebrating the retirement of Joel and Carolyn. They have worked as missionaries for five decades to bring the good news of Jesus to the people of Israel. So well-done, good and faithful servants. Thanks for letting us be a part of that. You can get regularly updated on what's happening around the world. Shoot us a message. Go to our website, and we'd love to get you connected on some updates. Here's another question. A few people asked about, "What are we seeing as far as people coming back to church? Or new people? Or what's happening in churches in the South Bay?" So COVID really shifted how church is done all around the world, but especially in the South Bay. One of the really good things that came out of this is our churches in this area are working together now more than ever. A lot of us pastors are connected with each other more than we ever have been. I can tell you that I've been connecting with pastors at Oceanside Christian Fellowship and Restoration Life, Encounter Coastline, Life Covenant, The Bridge. I just met yesterday with the pastor of South Hills, a new neighborhood church in Manhattan Beach. And we're all seeing a lot of the same things. Here's some of the things that we're seeing. First, most churches are between 30% to 60% attendance. Now, I think that's because we're in LA County, and our community is kind of different than other California counties. And definitely, LA County is different than other areas of the country. So you really can't compare what's happening in LA County churches with churches in different parts of the United States. It's apples and oranges. And because of all this, almost all of our churches are kind of rethinking how we do what we do. We're changing things. We're trying new things. We're rethinking the best way to do church in this new season. And all of our churches are seeing small movements toward more in-person attendance. In fact, let me show you this chart here. Here's a chart of our in-person attendance since we began regathering in person in a great direction. And this weekend was actually our highest attendance since we started in-person services again. So really, really exciting. There are still many of you who are just joining us online, and so that isn't part of those numbers. We'd love to have you come join us in person again. Second thing we're seeing in this area is what one pastor called the "South Bay Shuffle." What this means is when a pastor retires, or a church makes changes, or a new church starts, in this area, long-term Christians start moving around to different churches. I think COVID just brought a bigger version of that. So some of the moves are because people were looking for in-person worship in 2020, and they found other congregations and then really connected there. Some people are moving to different churches because they relocated their job and they're moving out of the area. Some people found themselves in different places in life and looking for something differently. Some are moving around because of the way that their faith relates to their political leanings. And of course, there's a bunch of other reasons why people change churches. We pastors have been encouraging people to have healthy conversations, to not churchhop because of negative feelings or rash decision-making, but to finish well if you're changing churches. I think that's just a good principle in general. And that leads to one other thing that we're seeing. The churches in the South Bay are in cooperation, not competition. We all do things different ways. All of our churches love what we're individually doing, but we also love what all the other churches are doing. So we're all kind of working together for the common mission. Now, that's not always the case with us individual Christians. I was just reading the other day in the New Testament. The Apostle Paul was addressing the church in Corinth, and in one of his letters, he says, "You know, you guys are like, 'I am of Paul. I am of Apollos. I am of Peter.'" They were dividing up based on preferred styles and approaches, and even particular people that they liked. And Paul was like, "Yeah, we don't do that. That's not Christian." He goes on to say, "We are a body, and we're all different parts, and we all need each other." And I think this is especially true. With 80% of people in the South Bay being unchurched or de-churched, I've always said that we actually need more churches doing things in different ways so that we can reach all different kinds of people. So I can tell you, us pastors, we're working really hard to work together as Christians are moving around. Now, that's just the longtime Christians. Let me tell you one more thing that we're seeing here in the South Bay. People are discovering church and Jesus for the first time. So as people are coming back to church in person and in groups in their homes, we're seeing a lot of people who found us online and are now starting to come in person for the first time. In 2020, people found us online. They accepted Jesus. They got baptized. They joined an online group, and now they're in person. Each week, we're seeing people who, in 2020, they thought, "Man, I should try church again," or "for the first time." Now they're showing up in person, and we're doing everything we can to help them find and follow Jesus. Just this last weekend, we saw eight people renewing their faith in Jesus and two new decisions for Jesus. And those are just the ones that we know of who responded to us personally when we put up that QR code and said, "Let's talk." And some of you might even be with us online right now. So awesome that you're connected with us now. We also got some great comments that are coming in regularly. There's a few of them. We asked some people, "What was your favorite part of your experience at Journey?" And they usually say, "It's great music and genuine and relatable messages." People are saying things like, "It's really welcoming, and the communication is clear and concise." We've asked people, "What made you want to visit Journey?" I just read a response this last week. They said, "I watched it online, and I loved it." Another great response was, "I was invited by my mom." And so way to go, moms, inviting your kids to come to church. So we love that feedback, and it lets us know, "All right, we're heading in the right direction. Here's what we're trying to do at church. We're trying to create an atmosphere where we have really sound biblical teaching, and it's super easy to understand and apply. We want a welcoming place where people who might be hesitant to come to church for the first time feel great, and they feel like inviting their friends. And we also want to create this atmosphere where the music is an experience where people can relate to, especially unchurched people. They go, "Wow, this is great." So I want to say thank you for being a part of this, for serving, for giving, for being in a group, for inviting people, for attending, and whether that's attending in person right now, or you might still be attending online. One more question came up, and this gets asked usually around this time of year. "What's coming up for the rest of the year?" So let me just kind of summarize a little bit. We're right in this three-week series about John the Baptist. I'm super excited about that. On November 21st, we're doing something called Journey Culture, and this is for people who are new to Journey and want to know what we're all about and how we do things. And it's going to be time for me to answer questions that people have and help us lock arms in what we do here. So if you're new, please come. If you've brought someone new, invite them to come and come along with them. And then we're going to jump into the Christmas season. Can you believe that we're at Christmas already? Let me tell you how this year is going to be really special and different. November 28th, we're going to start a series called Choose Christmas. So Christmas comes with a lot of choices, right? What decorations and what gifts and what get-togethers are we going to go to? This year, we're going to talk about making intentional choices about what Christmas is all about. Hope, love, peace, joy, Jesus. And we're going to be looking at the Christmas story in the Book of Luke, a book of the Bible that we've actually been going through for months now. And it's going to be a great series to invite your non-church friends. A lot of people come to church around the Christmas season, so this is a great time to invite people. Now, instead of a large Christmas concert at the Redona Beach Performing Arts Center, this year, we're going to do some special Christmas musical weekend at both of our campuses. So December 18th at 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., and then December 19th, 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. These are going to be the same at both of our campuses. And then we're going to be doing Christmas Eve services at both of our campuses, 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. We're going to give a lot more information about this, and there'll be plenty of time to invite your friends and just create a great atmosphere where you can bring your friends to it. It's also going to mean we've got to pull together and volunteer for this. So I would love for you to be able to sign up and volunteer to do this. We'll have some information coming out soon about how you can get involved so that we can all pull together and pull off some really amazing Christmas programming. On the last Sunday of the year, the day after Christmas, we're going to have Christmas at home. And so we're going to be doing, we're all going to be online, and we know how to do that already. We're going to have some music, and then Pastor Jill and I are going to share a message about wrapping up the year right and how we can move into next year with Jesus. And we'll also be telling you about some great stuff that's going to be happening in 2022. So I just want to say thank you so much. Let me just say personally, in the last 18 months, even as we've started regathering, it's been a uniquely challenging time for our pastors, for all of our team members. I know it has been for you. I want to thank you for the ways that we've worked really hard to lean into discussion, to lean into conversations. So grateful for that. I think we've elevated the priority of treating each other with respect, assuming the best in each other, and really asking God to allow the fruit of the Spirit, that love, joy, peace, patience, gentleness, kindness, self-control, all of that to flow out of us and into each other's lives. And I just want to continue to encourage us to lean into that. I think we've got another six months or a year of rebuilding who we are. But I'll tell you, the harvest is ripe. There are people that are ready to connect with Jesus, and we want to be that great church that can make that happen. So thanks for being a part of that. I'm going to now turn over the final part of our meeting to Sheldon, one of our elders. He's going to give you an update on our votes, share some other thoughts and some prayer. So now you come into this space, and I
It looks like we do not have any votes against our candidates. And so it looks like with that, that our nominees for elder and for the deaconate have been approved. So thank you all for your votes. I just want to close this out in prayer. And before I start, you know, I just was reading earlier about Solomon and how when the Lord came to him in a dream, he had the opportunity to ask God for whatever he wanted. And he chose to ask God for a discerning heart so that he could lead his people. And I think with all of the things that we've been discussing and Jason just shared with us, I want to pray for that for our leaders here at Journey. Pray for you for that as well, and then pray for just the things we'll be enduring over the next several months. Would you bow your heads with me, please?
Father God, we just thank you, Lord, so much for who you are, Father. We thank you for bringing us together as a congregation here at Journey. And I ask that you would continue, Lord God, to keep your hand upon us, Lord God, to guide us and to lead us, Father God. Give us a heart, Lord God, that seeks and searches after you, Lord God. A heart to discern what is right from wrong, Lord God, and a heart, Lord God, to extend patience during these trying times, Father God. I pray that we would also extend grace to one another, Father God, as we struggle to listen to one another. So help us to be quick to hear, slow to speak, and slow to anger as we endure and love and work with one another, Father God. I pray for trust, and I pray for honesty and transparency, Lord God, as we continue, Lord God, to walk with one another. We thank you for all the members that are here. We thank you for all the giving that's provided. We thank you for all the lives that are being touched and changed and saved, Father God. And I pray for unity amongst us as a body of Journey, but more so as a body of Christ, Lord God. We need you now more than ever. People are hurting. People are isolated. People are afraid. But we know, Lord, that you did not give us a spirit of fear, but of love and of power and of a sound mind. So give us those things, Father God, and continue to bless us. We thank you for this town hall. We thank you for our new elders and our new deacons. And we, again, just pray that you keep your hand up on the leadership of Journey. So we love you, and we thank you, and we praise you. We pray these things in Jesus' name, for Christ's sake. Amen. Thank you all for joining us. We'll see you next time.